So next, I will read off the blue cards that are either they do not wish to speak to the board, but they have comments.
Do you think it's going to take more than two minutes?
Yes, let's go ahead and extend.
I'll make a motion to extend.
We have a motion.
Support.
By trustee, Mozepp, supported by trustee Barry.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Roll call. Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mozepp?
Yes.
Trustee Petchakoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
No name. They... Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that you...
No, that was the sheer statement.
I apologize, you did, you're right, she did.
And we have another person here who also said they had submitted want to speak. No, no.
These are the two that I called.
It's this lady in the green jacket.
I called both of those, those are the two that I have left.
Okay, let me go.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, please.
My name is Sarah Lookman. Last month I was approached regarding the Henry Ford Early College principal. I was approached by a contractor working with DPS, a retired employee and a current employee from the district, all from the Salina community. One indicated that they witnessed the employee call the kids monkeys. The second said they pretended, he was pretending to kick the students as they walked by. And the third indicated that he said Yemeni food was unsafe at a teacher appreciation dinner. Two of these allegations go back to his time working at Salina, but your investigation didn't uncover this because you barely scratched the surface. And even when they did, they found a culture of ethnic intimidation in a building he ran for 10 years. These were your words. No amount of blue ribbons can fix the culture of ethnic intimidation there. The administration created a new director position for him in central office because they knew he wasn't trustworthy enough to remain at the early college. They promoted him, you promoted him, because you cannot trust him to be around our kids at schools. The bottom line is that you have an employee who's been making disparaging comments to student staff and parents for over a decade, and he blatantly admitted two years ago. It's his words, it's in his file. If in his 27 years working for the district, he's not learned how to navigate cultural sensitivities, in spite of being counseled on it two years ago, what makes today any different? How many chances are you going to give? Enough. Our children will not be collateral damage as you try to habilitate employees on what is inappropriate or racist to say. Students will come first. Your apology, his apology rings hollow. The damage has been done. You've instilled in our several generations of students that they are less than others, simply because of what they are, not who they are. That's years of trauma and damage, and if our kids associate learning with trauma, how do you expect these kids to move on to higher learning? I haven't even touched on the physical assault of the second student I represented. Three witness statements were submitted to the administration. I sent you a picture for crying out loud. Your administration took 75 days to complete a 15-day investigation. HR drafted a report for one case and completely excluded assault allegation from it, intentionally. They did not submit it to the superintendent or the board. They swept it under the rug, as if to erase it from history. We received nothing except an email today saying that HR could not substantiate the claim. If that's the case, where's your report? Where's your evidence? Where's the superintendent's final decision? Who did you interview? Nobody, because it was never done. In full expectation that the superintendent will issue the same result of the promotion of the perpetrator in this next case, we would like to assert our right in accordance with your board policy to an appeal. Quote, "In attempt to resolve the complaint, the board shall meet with the concerned parties and their representative within 20 days of receipt of their appeals."
I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
"In addition to appealing the decision, we demand accountability for the lack of integrity to investigate on the part of HR, for the cronyism displayed by the cabinet who you are extending today for another two years." But this is what happens when you hire principals to serve as HR directors. They are unqualified. All we're asking is that you hold the principal and the district accountable, because that's what we elected you to do. And for the record, elections be damned, I will stand for what's right.
Thank you for your comment.
Do you love which one? This one's first? Okay.
Good evening, board members and superintendent.
Oh, sorry, just so there was a blue card, and who's the...
Akram.
What is her name?
Akram.
And she's giving her time to you, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew, sorry.
Sure. Adeb Mozepp. I'm here to speak because, and I want to address the board as a whole, because I'm very concerned on the directions of our schools. I love our schools. My kids goes to schools. I'm a product of this school district. I pride myself in being involved in the schools. We have great things happening in our schools, but however, we have challenges. And this board seem like don't like to confront challenges. You don't. You're now known as do-nothing board. Guess what the administration give you and move forward. And if there is a challenge, instead of addressing the challenge itself, you're starting attacking each other. And shame on you to do that. Focus on the challenges that our students face, that parents are bringing up. And when those, when those concern reach you, it tell you of the lack of leadership within the district. Because issues like this should not come forward to this level. They should have been addressed a long time ago. It tell you that we have a lack of leadership in the district when a superintendent pull out of community meetings. He doesn't want to speak to the community anymore, to our community. And the previous president of the board supported that, and you support it. It was in emails, we used to have discussions, civils, we used to have issues that bring up to our level. You don't want to hear that. It's doubled standards all the time in this district. And I was in, honestly, I was in planning to come to speak to you tonight. I came in, but a community member encouraged me to come to speak. And I'm doing it because of the double standards we see in this district, for those who have, who's connected, and those who are not. Because we heard about the coaching issue and that's important. And right away, it was solved and weak. It was gone. There was no issues. Nobody came to this, to this meeting tonight. Why? Why the other issues are not addressed right away, like that issue? Ask yourself why. Why this double standards for community who is marginalized and you think can't speak for itself and can't bring issues? Teachers came here three, four months ago. A lot of teachers came here to you. And you know when a teacher come here to the board to speak against administration? They're putting their job, their livelihood on the line. And what did you do? There were a couple of board members that just talk, at least acknowledge them. The majority of the board members were silent, like nothing is happening. And when they follow up, what did you guys told them? We gave you some money, so shut up. Yes. Those teachers still did not heard about the culture they facing. Even if there are two teachers, one teacher is enough for you to address those concern, let alone many teachers came, full event meeting like this. What did the board do? The response, we, we need to confront challenges. We live in a difficult times, and this is your job. Your job is not to come here, just claps, and it's great things. Your job to come here and confront challenges that our district face. We're a big district, we have a lot of challenges. It's like the, the issue with infrastructures. Same thing, what did you do? File it to, you don't want to confront, confront it. Now you want to study for 30-year study? Where was that 30 years since 2019 after the bond failed? Why you didn't conduct that? Why we now find ourselves we need a 30-year study? Come on, you don't want to confront challenges. Confront it, instead of attacking each other, confront the challenges and face. And I'll, I'll leave you with this, no matter how great our principal, superintendent is, and we have great relationship, no matter how great he is, no matter what he, how great he is, when he feel that the majority of the board will support him automatically, whatever he do, he will get the majority of the support of the board, he's not going to do a good job. He's not going to listen to, to some people. So he gonna dismiss like what's happening tonight. And it's unfortunate, my heart is really in pain to see our community going against each other. We shouldn't reach to this point. We shouldn't. When our kids are now in the same school attacking each other because who they are, where country they come from, we shouldn't. It's really painful to see that. We're proud ourselves of one community with each other, one team. I heard the superintendent speaking many times, one team. We need to feel that we're part of that team. Some community members don't feel part of that team. So it's your job to make us feel part of that team, not to dismiss us, not to tell us go home and we, we have blue ribbons. No. Address the issues that we come forward to you tonight. Talk to us like human beings. We're bringing pain in front of you. We're bringing students who are tortured. Whatever the issue is, talk to us like human beings, we're human beings here. Address us. Don't leave us in suspense like you left the teachers for months. And I hope that you improve on that. When parents or community members come to you, some of you said that last time, like people come to you, they speak, they leave, they get disengaged. What's the point of coming and address you if we don't get really appreciated and, and heard back at least a follow-up? You come with this concern, here's the follow-up, what happened? I agree, I don't agree, at least I feel like I always heard from you. But come here, write your name, say something, be part of the committee, and I appreciate it. Sorry for taking maybe more than I supposed to, I appreciate you. Have a good night.
There are two more blue cards that came in, and they are here. So before I read the blue cards, next, Sam Badun. I'm sorry, he didn't, he didn't say what you wanted to speak about, so you didn't put on there what you wanted to speak about, so.
There's so much to speak about.
Three minutes, though.
All right. I'm actually going to make this really quick. I'm just going to touch on something that a few people haven't, well, nobody's really touched on. First of all, thank you for having me, and good evening to the board and the superintendent. I want to talk about basically how our money or our tax dollars being spent, and I feel it's not, not being spent in the, in the right places, and I'll get to that in a second. But I do want to say, I do agree with the gentleman that was up here that the challenges need to be faced, and, and we do have a reputation here in, in our district that we tend to kind of sweep things under the rug.
We have a speaker speaking, please be quiet in the back.
I reclaim my time, please. Okay, and I also would like to piggyback off of Mr. Hashem and Ms. Neimer's, basically their statements of accountability, and, and that there are, there are a lot of issues, and I've sent emails to the board, I've sent emails to the superintendent. And I am going to leave on record my email for anybody who's watching this, or anybody in the back that would like to get a mountain of facts, not allegations, as one, as, as one board member had said, and another board member pretty much said that they would pray for me as patronizing me. Again, in, in essence, to try to silence me, but we're not going to go, we're not going to go there, we're going to go into some facts here. We are one of the, we, we pay one of the most school taxes in the state of Michigan. I don't have that actual number, but I think it's in the top 10. However, I'm going to give you some numbers that are staggering. We are ranked 3,276 nationally out of 17,843 school districts as far as our rankings. So when you guys boast about, oh, we're up there, we're not up there. We're not even in the top one-third. We're 100, our top high school, which is Dearborn High School, is 110 out of 660 high schools, and three of them being here in, in Dearborn. Out of the Detroit Metro schools, we rank 43, 43rd out of 57. And of course, in the city of Dearborn, Dearborn High School ranks number one out of three. In college readiness, we rank 5,965 nationally out of 17,843 schools. State assessment proficiency, we rank 5,392 out of 17,843. Well, let me go back to college readiness. Out of the state of Michigan, we are 184 out of 660. Going back to state assessment, I gave national numbers.
I'm going to need you to wrap up, please.
It's not going to take too much time, but you've given people, one or three minutes, I asked for reclaiming my time. So please, let me, let me finish. This is not a personal thing. Let, let, let the public know what, what we're going, what...
We've already extended this meeting well beyond, and we haven't stopped your business.
We have a right to speak.
I understand. Please wrap up your comments.
I will. College curriculum, we rank 5,013 nationally out of 17,843. In the state, we're 161 out of 660. State assessment performance, we're 1,434th out of 7,843, and in the state of Michigan, we're 48th, which is probably one of the best as far as state assessment performance in the state of Michigan, we're 48 out of 660. Our scorecard is 81.64.
Okay, I've given you extra time.
Okay, we, we, as far as taking at least one AP exam, 32% of our students have done that. Passed at least one AP exam, 20% of our students have only done that. Mathematics proficiency, we're at 40%. Reading proficiency, we're at 62%. The only thing that we're good at, which everybody pretty much graduates, is graduation rate, 95%. I'll wrap it up here, but my email is WBadun, spelled with an E, the number five, at gmail.com. So it's WBadun5@gmail.com for anybody who wants much more records and...
Thank you.
And what the administration's all about, please email me and I'll send you...
We're going to have to call for an extension on the meeting again.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay.
Supporting.
We have an extension from trustee Mozepp, a support from trustee Barry, may I have a roll call?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mozepp?
Yes.
Trustee Petchakoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
The last blue card for in-person, Mona Mowari. She would like to come to speak to the board about the mistreatment of Yemeni students at Henry Ford Early College.
Hi, my name is Mona, and I'm a Yemeni-American mother. My daughter goes to the Dearborn Public Schools, and so do my nephews and my nieces. And I'm here to express my frustration and deep concern about how Yemeni students are being treated in the Henry Ford Early College by the principal and the assistant principal. I'm not going to reiterate what's been said already. I'm here to ask the board one simple ask, and it is, please do your job in ensuring our kids' safety, our students' safety, their emotional and physical and mental safety. The fact that the superintendent decided to keep this person employed tells our community and our kids that they don't matter to you, and that you're okay tolerating racist behavior and bullying. Anywhere else, he would have been terminated. Thank you.
I will start reading the blue cards for those who are not in-person, or that did not want to speak to the board. Anonymous, they wanted to speak to the board about racism in the district. How dare you allow someone who makes racist comments towards the Yemeni community to continue to work in DPS? There is zero tolerance for racism. Next, no name. I wish not to speak, but I call for removing the principal of Henry Ford Early College. Anonymous, regardless of discriminatory comments against Yemenis or non-Yemenis, these children already have so much pressure from social media and peer pressure, where any negative comments could have the biggest impact on their future. This should not be condoned, period. Next, I apologize, I cannot read the last, the first name. I'll spell the A-L-Z-R-J-A-W-I, last name. Support for Henry Ford Early College principal. Anonymous, DPS is known to support racist staff against students. Enough time to remove the principal of Henry Ford Early College from DPS altogether. First name Adam, last name starts with an M, but I cannot read the rest of the writing. He is wishing to speak to the, or did not want to speak to the board, but wants to make the following comment to get rid of the Henry Ford Early College principal. No name, remove the Henry Ford Early College principal from his post. Mr. Obad Mari, that the Henry Ford Early College president needs to be investigated. Hazeem Fithri, the Henry Ford Early College president should be penalized and punished for his racist actions and comments. Ajil Almati, Henry Ford Early College should, president should be disciplined and penalized for his actions and remarks racist comments. Ms. Abdullah, educators should be creating a nurturing, respectful environment without There was a name, but it's crossed out, so I'll leave it as crossed out. Aggressiveness that the principal from Henry Ford Early College attacks his students, also the racism that he puts out to the Arab students. Anonymous, the Henry Ford Early College president, or I'm sorry, principal, has shown racist actions, comments, and remarks towards male boys. Discipline should be... Should be, I'm not quite sure, not promotion. Discipline should be performed, not promotion. Sahar Abdullah, remove the Henry Ford Early College principal from DPS for the racism and bigotry he has shown to the Yemeni and Iraqi students. He will go to the state board otherwise. Amari Sadi, training and accountability for administrators on cultural sensitivity. It is not okay to allow racially charged sarcasm to be unleashed on innocent students. No name, I'm infuriated on the actions of the principal at HFEC and lack of accountability by the district. I'm calling on the Board of Education to remove this individual from his position. No name, special ed services needs to be revamped. It lacks staff and funds to provide them fair services because an employee values paying his staff well, but doesn't care for kids. Also, Jim Crow needs to end in Dearborn, racism, racism has no room in Dearborn. Ali Barry would like, he just put HFEC. And the last one, Bert, Mr. Bert would like, he just put HFEC as well. And the last one, it's from Mr. Osama Sablani, and he left behind, this is why I'm standing by and supporting Dearborn Public Schools Superintendent Dr. Glenn Maleko from 2018 to 2022 for meritorious budget awards from the Association of School Business Officials International. 2017 to 2021, five national blue ribbon schools from the United States Department of Education. 2019, Dr. Glenn Maleko was named at the state of Super, Michigan Superintendent of the Year by Mass of the Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators. 2019, Dearborn School District received the National Title I Distinguished School. 2015 to present, Dr. Maleko was rated highly effective by the Board of Education. 2019, the Mackinac Center rated Dearborn Public School District as one of the top districts for achievement. Dr. Maleko was voted by Massa as president-elect 2022 to 2023, and president 23 to 24, State Superintendent Association. In 2016, the U.S. News and World Report magazine ranked best high schools in the country, and Michigan ranked seven schools with gold medals, 93 with silver medals, and 159 with bronze medals. Dearborn High and Fortuna received a silver ranking and were in the top 100. Edsel received a bronze medal. There are a total of 850 high schools in the state of Michigan. All three schools were recognized in national rankings and state rankings. As a fact that several students from this district are attending or have attended Ivy League universities and graduating top of their class, and much more, I'm happy to announce that on June 8th, the Arab American News in collaboration with Huntington Bank will be giving $75,000 in scholarships to 20 seniors from Dearborn and Crestwood School Districts. During the process, I was impressed by the quality of our students and their academic achievements. It doesn't come by, this doesn't come by accident. Thanks to the superintendent, his team of principals, assistant principals, counselors, and teachers for making this happen. Can we do better? Yes. But not by bickering and backstabbing. Working together, we can do much better. I believe, I do not see any more blue cards. That is the end of citizen participation. And then next is board follow-up within citizen participation.
Okay, trustee Thor?
One of the comments tonight was about the superintendent and no longer communicating as often with certain communities in the district. And it was alluded to, this was something that was done last year. It was, it was a decision that, that I made. I don't know how much I talked with the rest of the board, but as the president, what I saw was that the superintendent was spending a lot of his time dealing with specific schools and groups. And what I asked him to do was create a system where he can be able to rotate between all the different schools and groups, and have his executive directors also attending meetings, so he's got more, his time spread more evenly across the district. So I did want to comment on that one. Another thing that was brought up a couple of times, Dr. Maleko, was about security. We are coming off another high school, I'm sorry, not high school, but elementary, or just school shooting in general. And while we've already talked about things we're going to be working on in the district this summer, and the big one being HVAC systems, I would ask the district to please consider the safety and, and security of our students and see what other projects we could work on during this summer, even if it means redirecting some of the, the capital that we were assuming was going to be going to HVAC. Thanks.
Trustee Barry?
Dr. Maleko, with graduations come up, did you have anything to add regarding the key club demand?
Yeah, I see, I had that on the list, so I'm glad you brought it up. The, so, the, the sashes on the cords, and it's the, it's been the process of recognizing academic, and it hasn't been for participation. Mr. Martin, I know is going to have another review, but right now, because we have a lot of clubs and groups that students can participate in, so you potentially have a lot. So it's come, you know, the high school principals, they review it every year through the secondary, and to this point, we haven't done it for participation. It's only been for, you know, academic achievement levels, so that's been the delineation. And again, part of it is just because we, you know, we value key club, we value rotary, all of them, and that's been the decision to this point. Doesn't mean we can't review it in, in the future, and I believe that's what Mr. Martin is doing with the team as well.
I just wanted to give you an opportunity...
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah.
The other thing, I've got a few things, Madam President. I heard earlier that maybe on the blue cards, we should put a spot for students. Maybe, I think there, isn't there a spot where, what's your relationship or...
Who you're representing.
Representing? Yeah, maybe we should clarify and say, you know, student, I mean, students come up here and they say we're students, parents come up here and say we're parents. But I'd, I'd like to also see, you know, what is your interest in the district? Because, you know, we've had people come up here and speak that they actually get paid from the district and make comments, and we don't know that. You need to disclose that, that, you know, you're on the payroll here, so, okay, that's just a comment. The other thing is, Ali Alhamma, my mother always taught me, waf mal hat, stand with what is righteous. So I'm not looking to defend anybody here, nobody in this table needs defending, but words do matter. It was mentioned earlier that last meeting, the only time, it was at one point where, I was going to call you Dr. Mozepp, but we have a Dr. Mozepp, but trustee Mozepp switched gears when he was told that his motion was illegal. It's black and white right here, he was told that his motion is not illegal. We just approve these minutes. And the other, the other thing, just to throw accusations that possibly this board broke the Open Meetings Act. When you have an employee, any employee that asks for a closed session, the board does not have an option to bring up any evaluations or anything about that employee on public. Employee asks for a closed session, you're going to a closed session, and I made that very clear. And the superintendent, superintendent Maleko said that he wants a closed session, then we went to closed session. I'm going to clarify that.
Point, point of information, he did not ask for it. Trustee Mozepp asked for it, and then Dr. Maleko said in order to not, to, to be accommodating, he would do it, but he did not ask for that closed session at that meeting.
Okay, let me go back to what I read earlier. Trustee Barry said, there was a discussion going back and forth, and we're all focusing on this corner right here, there's a discussion that was going back and forth between Dr. Maleko and trustee Mozepp. Okay? And as soon as I said, just to be safe, I'll support the motion... And as soon as I said, just to be safe, I'll support the motion, superintendent Malaco said that he wants a closed session.
Because trustee Moses asked for.
And you know what, and if I was, if I knew what I had to say, I would probably advise my employee that, yeah, we should go into closed session. I'm just saying that, you know, to accuse the board that we broke an open meetings act.
No, I don't, I don't think that's what you were saying. Initially, initially trustee Moses said I want to go into a closed session without any, and I said at that time, you can't just call for a closed session. It has, there has to be a, a reason for it.
And I can go back in a minute where he says, yes, I want to call for a closed session under personnel reasons.
And then he went, he first called for just a closed session, and I said you can't call for just a closed session, has to have a, a, a reason for it. So then he went to the personnel, and then he went to Dr. Malaco. And I think that the reference was for he initially caused, and maybe her wording was.
Well, it was very clear that there might have been a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Oh, for that part, I can't, yeah.
No, once an employee asks, and correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows about it, once an employee asks for a closed session, you just go into closed session.
He didn't ask for a closed session.
He didn't ask for the closed session.
Can I, can I clarify my intent since I'm here? I did not want to go into a closed session. I said I did it to be cooperative, but what I was saying on the record was that for my performance evaluation, and I actually wanted to go, I said my performance evaluation is going to happen in a couple of weeks, we have a meeting, and then it was stated, no, we're going in right now. And that's when I did it to be cooperative, but just so it's, I'm on the record, my intent was not, I didn't even know there was going to be a call. I mean, I was caught off guard like a lot of people were. So my intent was, I did do it to be cooperative, but it wasn't my idea, I didn't, I, and secondly, I want you to know, yes, if you're discussing my performance, I don't know what it is. I need advanced written notice. So in the future, I want to put that on record too, that I need that written notice, let's afford it to every employee.
And you're entitled to that.
You know, for every employee. So my, yeah, but my intent was not to go in, but I did it because there was, you know, it was a tense situation, we had people in the crowd, and I felt like, okay, I want to be cooperative, and, you know, let's calm down, and let's, and that's why I did it. But, but on record, I really did not.
We're at 11.
We're going to have to call for an extension.
Sorry.
Motion, extend the meeting.
From trustee Barry, supported by trustee Moses.
Not trustee D'Ambrosio, supported.
Oh, okay.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrosio.
Yes.
Trustee Moses.
Yes.
Trustee Petchikoff.
Yes.
Trustee Thor.
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald.
Yes, and I'm going to have to say, can we, we gotta.
I just, I just, I mean, there was comments made.
I, I understand, but it is already 11:00.
That we didn't take a vote.
We need to.
There was a reason why we didn't take a vote. There was a motion on the table, and like I said, I'm not going to prove myself, but to be safe, I'm going to support it, just to, just to make sure that we don't cross any lines, because if all of a sudden, you know, somebody gets angry, says something, then we'll get ourselves in trouble. I did support the motion, but at the, whatever, 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 if Dr. Malaco fears like he scores to ask for a closed session, but he did ask for a closed session, that's not, that's why we did not take the vote. So there was, my point is, we did not break any open meetings.
We need to move forward.
Yeah, and I wasn't commenting on the open meetings, I was just commenting on my.
No, I understand.
Okay, I've got one more item I want to cover.
Sure, please.
Okay, it was brought up a couple of times about the coaching issue. I was sitting in a committee meeting earlier, and I got a message not to come to this meeting, things have been resolved. I'm like, it was a little joke, Mary and I just laughed about it. Hey, I can go home, let's call Roxanne, tell her during the meeting, we're having fun with this, right? I was clueless. Then I sat and talked to another one of my colleagues, we have no idea what's going on. So I would like a report, if at 2:30 in the afternoon, we got a, an email from an administrator, and we heard from two other administrators the last 24 hours, then all of a sudden I come here, then I hear that things have, things are worked out, or whatever that means. So I just like to report on what, what happened today compared to all these emails and everything else that we've been talking about. Thank you very much, I'm excited, Madam President.
Trustee D'Ambrosio.
Piggybacking on, same in regard to the sports thing. It was on social media much earlier than anybody knew about it. And I'd like to know how this information gets out to the public before this board even knows what's going on. And I brought this up more than once, and, you know, I just don't understand, there is a leak in the dam.
I raised my hand for trustee Petchikoff.
Trustee Moses.
As far as our conversation, breaking the Open Meeting Act, I think we can go back to the tape and just watch. I did call on Dr. Malaco to call for a closed session, and I was arguing with trustee Barry that we have to make the motion, I made the motion, he supported it, we have to vote on it, but he, based on his experience, he said, we don't need even a roll call. So, I mean, I, I believe at that time, if we did a roll call, that's, but I'm not getting into that. It's, it was clear that we wanted to go to a clearer session, and that's why I, I'm not going to go, obviously, what happened in closed session, that's, that's why we wanted to go behind closed doors for the unity of this board and for the safety of our staff, all of our staff members, including Dr. Malaco.
Trustee Petchikoff. The one thing, the one thing I want to point out about, and that's why I brought up about the court of public opinion and social media. My suspicion is, is that a lot of people who are undergoing these circumstances tend to share things with other people before we ever get the information. And some of these people have relationships with people who have Facebook blog sites, and they don't follow the proper protocol that we would like to see, which is to come, come to some kind of conversation within the district to try to resolve these issues before they take it to the public space in order to argue it there. And we, we kind of saw a representation of that tonight. A lot of people came in because they had heard, seen, read, been encouraged, whatever, through social media to make their voices heard, heard here. The issue with them doing it this way is that it gives the impression that we are the do-nothing board because we are having to sit here and, and listen to a variety of, individuals who have, who have an impression and a perception of what's occurring without all of the full facts. And as a board, we can't always share the, all of the full facts legally, and they would like to have access to that information. And there would be a legal problem if, if we went forward with it. So it's an unfortunate consequence of social media, and people use, it's like the old telephone game where everybody gets on, I'm a little older than some of you, but.
What did you say, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I know. So that, so that's where we stand on that. But I did have the board follow-up, and I don't know if Mr. Asseli is still here about the transportation and special education, because that was brought up again tonight as well. Hold on, just one second, please, trustee Thor.
Dr. Malaco, several of the, the people that commented also talked about the use of some of the district's media for purposes that I'd say wasn't intended for. So we need to make sure district employees know whether it's Remind, emails, blogs, any other item, what it is and is not supposed to be used for.
Can I comment too? I was going to mention, yeah, that was one of the things I was going to mention, that we'll look into it. I don't, I don't, I think there was maybe an email shared, but I have to see what it is, we have to look into that. We don't, I don't have the detail, but we would. Excuse me. And Remind is also not our official platform, we use it as a tool, so we'll have to see what was used, what, you know, if we have that information, and we'll have our team look into it to see, you know, who may have, who may have done that. Because we definitely don't, you know, have people, you know, condone for that kind of issue and sending, you know, students to the, to the meetings and things like that.
Well, even if Remind isn't ours, we use it. Like Schoology, Parent Connect, any of these things that, and we want to make sure the information that's going out is, is being, is being, everything's being used appropriately.
Absolutely, thank you.
Trustee Watts.
Just two quick suggestions. I think with the, being able to hear the student voice, I think is important, and getting them in and out quickly, I think is also important. So if maybe going forward, we would have a, a special color where there's citizen participation, so that if it is a student, we can get them in and out.
Or even a sticker or something. We don't have to change all the cards, just have.
Just, just something that we would know that if they're here, I think we need to value their, their sleep time and, and whatnot. And I think, the other thing that I was hearing was a lot of communication. And I think that, that may be the theme of today is over, there's nothing wrong with overly communicating. And I think when there was that school shooting, I received a lot of information, and I saw it on social media about what Dr. Malaco put out there. But if those parents are not subscribing to those logs or letters, I'm wondering how else we can make sure that we are sending it out. I know principals are sending it out, but I think the person who spoke to it isn't a parent and, and may not be on those blogs. So I don't know, do we share it on other community forums?
The, like the letter thing?
Yeah.
It was all, it was on social media as well. So it's all, it's on the public.
So as long as they would follow it, so maybe encouraging.
Yeah, if they're on either my social media or if they're on the district, they would have gotten it that way. Along with the blogs. And I think he did a, on a couple of them, we did like a blast out with the blogs.
Okay. That was it. Okay. Go ahead, Michael.
Good evening or good morning, I don't know which one to say. But I do have a great update here. This morning, actually, I woke up to a text message from one of our great community partners, Blue Hands United, in which they mentioned that a parent had reached out to them, very excited that they saw a Dearborn Public Schools bus pull up and do a special ed route pickup for one of our students that was formerly transported by National Trails. The reason why I'm telling you this story is we begun the transition from National Trails to Dearborn Public Schools for our most vulnerable populations. How school had a route today, so did Nolan Elementary, and hopefully by the beginning of next year, will be fully routed for our most vulnerable students by Dearborn Public Schools. I'd like to give a, a huge thank you to Dr. Malaco through the entire process, in addition to Director Mark Andrews, Ms. Nada Elamedine, and Supervisor Rick Sortis. We worked collaboratively along with all of our community partners, Blue Hands United and such. We had a very positive meeting, so we're happy with the results, and hopefully we can continue to move forward with things as well. Thank you.
Before you continue, Dr. Malaco, I just want to say, we are, thank you, part of, the part of the agenda that we are on now is after citizens' participation, it's called board follow-up. I want to thank trustee Petchikoff for having the suggestion, and this is primarily to update on issues from previous meetings. Excuse me, they were brought forward. So that was an update, and Dr. Malaco has a couple as well.
Yeah, so I have one other one. We have had two very positive meetings, and this came up at blue card a few months ago. We formed a committee called the Music Committee, and I have several employees on there, and I want to, I don't know if I can, can I mention that, just they're on the committee?
Sure.
Okay. So Rose Aldubaly, Karen Sherman, Community as well, and it's from the Dearborn Youth Symphony, and the Dear, the Dearborn Ever-American Chamber Symphony is on there too. And I'm leading the meeting, but really, they're going to be doing a lot of the work, but they're very excited. There's Brian McCloskey, Lisa Meyer, Jillian Newton, Griffin Wojtowski, Hiba Ababaki, I think I said Rose Aldubaly, Fatima Faraj, Elizabeth Myers, and Michael Abraham, and we might get another parent on there, but it's been very positive, and they're already trying, we've added some staffing with the middle school, which, you know, over a certain time, and then they're doing some things, oh, and I don't know if I put, Dan, I'm missing one person here, I know, because this comes from the appointment. But from Fortson, they were also doing a lot of promotion and positive with Mr. McCloskey and with Dan over at Fortson, and they were doing, you know, a lot of positive. So the committee is going well, we've had two meetings, I will probably meet with them twice a year, and then they'll have meetings in between, but it is very positive, and I just wanted to mention that. And the other thing I do want to just clarify is that, you know, obviously with an investigation, I can't get into, you know, specific things, and they're always sensitive, we have legal counsel involved, and, you know, we can't comment on the specifics. But I do want to clarify one thing, there was no promotions over at the HFEC, so I'm not sure where, where that was coming from, but there was no promotion. I just want to clarify that. And then just to say, yeah, it's, you know, unfortunately, when you're in, you know, we can't talk publicly about personnel matters, investigations involving staff and students, and so we can't really provide a, you know, a detailed response, but I can say that, at least clarify that information. Thank you.